Okay, if I can get everybody's attention please, we're gonna, uh, please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. James Pinkock, you ready? Alright, I'll call this, um, regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council, the order here at 5:30 on Tuesday, August the 4th, 2015, and welcome everybody here this evening, uh, for tonight's council meeting. I did want to mention before we started that, uh, Councilmember Levine is not here tonight. Uh, many of you may know, his wife is, uh, going under, uh, some treatment for a, uh, severe blood disease. And, uh, just to ask you, she's in recovery, but she's not completely out of the woods yet. So if everybody could just keep the same family in your, in your prayers, it'd certainly be appreciated. And that's, that's the reason Doug couldn't be with us tonight. And he, uh, just wanted to send out his, uh, thanks for those that have had him, uh, in your thoughts and prayers today. So, so just want everybody to know that. Also, uh, wanted to begin tonight with, uh, some celebrations. And if everybody could please turn your cellphones off, if you're not used to coming to meetings like this, uh, just please silence your cellphone or electronic device. Uh, it's always a problem with Mr. Nick's up here, he's electronically challenged, but maybe in a different way. But at least he admits it. So I wanted to, uh, us to start tonight, uh, in song. Uh, we don't typically start our council meetings with, uh, with a song, but we're gonna do that tonight. Cause we have a staff member, it's his birthday.
Do we not gonna sing?
I might even tell you it was, but somebody just severely shrugged with their shoulders and was hiding right now. So, Walter Wood, it's his birthday. So, let's sing happy birthday to Walter.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Walter. Happy birthday to you.
For those of you who don't know, Walter's our finance director and he does a fantastic job, uh, keeping track in our certifications, the highest rating in the, in the city, and just thanks for all that you do. The other thing that, uh, I've got the honor to do tonight, and I'm really glad there's a crowd here to hear about this. Um, how many of you, uh, participated in the 4th of July this year? How many of you heard about it? A phenomenal grassroots effort from citizens in our community to say, you know what? We want to bring back something that is really special in Stevensville. And that's the 4th of July celebration that provides something for people to do, uh, as a community. And it was a phenomenal success, even in its first year, to revive what is a really important aspect of our community. And so the council wanted to, uh, to recognize that and provide some certificates of appreciation tonight for some of your fellow local citizens that, that have done that. And the certificate I'll read before I call the folks up here. And thanks for your leadership in coordinating the activities for the 4th of July celebration. We further acknowledge your sacrifice in restoring this treasured, family-oriented day of activities focused on the birth of the United States of America. So for us to come together as a community and celebrate what makes us unique as Americans and to do so in a family-oriented environment, that's what Stevensville's about. And so I, I just want to, uh, ask each of you to come up here and we'll, we'll stay up here so we can give you a round of applause. But Shelley Gillan was, uh, the, uh, main coordinator of this. I don't know what to call you, but, but the, uh...
Co-founder, I don't know.
This woman was phenomenal. And, uh, I know she had a team with her, but you gotta have a coach to make the team work. So Shelley, thanks you for all that you did to help make this happen. And, uh, we're just looking forward to next year.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Amber?
She was the leader of the gang.
Leader of the gang, Amber. Thank you very much. Mindy? Thank you, Mindy Hanson. John, Rowley? Thank you very much. Jody Lee? I want to be a honc hobbles. Danny Kennedy? Alright, let's get a picture of y'all real quick. Our youngest staff, you want to, you believe you want to, let us door, whatever you want to do. Alright, the next item on the, uh, the agenda is citizens' general discussion. And I've got some requests that I'll, uh, recognize when the time to come up. I just want to remind you, if you're an individual, you're, uh, you're allowed three minutes. And if you're representing a group, you're limited to 10 minutes. And Cindy will help us with that as you, as you come forward. So, uh, Marion Cole?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, uh, may I ask something real quick?
Sure.
Do I still understand that our cameras are broken now? Are we, we've been televised or?
They're broken.
Okay, we are, alright.
I'm Marion Cole and I live at 432 Tanglewood Trail. And I'll be brief, cause it looks like you have a busy evening. But I just wanted to come here and to inform you all about a really special, fun event that's being planned for Stevensville from October the 10th. It's called Sundown on the Square. The idea for this was conceived in the wee hours of early morning at the fitness center by three ladies who got to talking about in 1974, when the three convicts had escaped the prison in Colorado and came to Eret County terrorizing, uh, all along the way from Colorado to Eret County. Uh, the escapees set off one of the most intense man hunts in North Central Texas history. Over 200 lawmen, including the FBI, US Marshal, Texas Rangers, Highway Patrol, and surrounding police forces converged on Eret County where citizens were being subjected to terror and cold-blooded murder. Sherry Knight, our local historian and author, wrote a book about this event. It's called Death List: Trail of Terror. The book has been out in print for quite some time and she wanted to, uh, reprint the book. Well, these three ladies decided to call upon Sherry and get her to reprint the book and we'd have a book signing. Well, we all, there's several of us got together and thought, we want to do something more than a book signing. We want to have something really fun. So, we've been working on this since probably, I think, maybe March, February. And, uh, we're going, we've, uh, we, uh, we're gonna, uh, barricade off part of the square. We're going to have vendors downtown of the, uh, restaurants that are local, his, in our local historic district are gonna be the local vendors participating. The merchants will be open for shopping and there's gonna be a children's area. The, the, this is in conjunction with, uh, the Bygone Days on the Bosque, which is gonna be Saturday, October the 10th. The Bygone Days is, is an event during the daytime from 10 until core. And our event is gonna be from 5 until, till 9. We're gonna be focusing on another Bygone Day that's not early American and, and pioneer. It's gonna be the 70s and that's when this book, that's when this, uh, event happened. So there'll be bands playing 70s music. We want people to come out in their disco or whatever. Surely some of us still have stuff from the 70s in our closet. But, uh, it's gonna be a money, a money, a fundraiser for the museum. So, uh, the merchants and the, uh, vendors, we're gonna be donating, donating a portion of their sales that evening to the museum. Uh, we're selling tickets for the event. Uh, the children's area, there will be tickets sold for that. Uh, there's gonna be a photo booth, which is an old, uh, converted Volkswagen, uh, bus, which is a photo booth. And the book signing will be inside the newly remodeled, uh, bank building on the corner. Sherry will be in there with her books and signing her books. There is also gonna be a children's art contest. Uh, Julie Crouch of the Cross District Fire Arts Council is, uh, coordinating that. And, uh, it's gonna be the children, uh, from Hook Elementary and from Henderson Junior High. And they will be required or asked to, uh, draw in, or a painting or whatever of a landmark building here in Stevensville. Uh, in addition to that, Miller Wells and Opal Black have donated two paintings, which have been raffled off. And all the proceeds from that raffle will go to the museum also. Each of you have been given a brochure that explains what's going on, it tells, tells about it. There's also inside an insert, uh, that tells about Sherry and her book. And then on the other side, there's the, all of the, uh, sponsorship levels. Right now, we're in the process of going around and, and asking for sponsors for this event. Uh, but we hope it's a, we hope it's the beginning of something really fun. There's so many small towns around that have events on their square and there's no reason why we couldn't do this too. So, it's a, it's, we're embarking on something new. We hope everybody will come out and support it that evening, it's October the 10th. And, um, so if you have any questions, we'd like to answer them for you.
Any questions for Marion?
Okay, great. And there's also a little perforated place here that if you want to contribute, you can tear it off. Thank you.
Marion, I think Boyd already dripped his off and is looking for his check. No, that i- is great news. And Marion, thank you for coming and presenting that tonight. I mean, this is another example of, of, uh, citizens and community having a great idea and us finding a way to celebrate our community together and the use of the square for that. Uh, I think just is a great indicator of the revival of that area. And, uh, so just thank you very much for that. Okay, I've got Justin Allison.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for your time. I come here tonight in favor of the full and immediate reinstatement of Building Official Tom Heath and Director of Building and Planning Services Judy Miller. I'm in favor of the immediate reinstatement for a variety of reasons. Most importantly, time is of the essence. The people of Stevensville have recently voted for their support of economic development. And to change leadership now would undermine and destroy our critical strategic window of opportunity. Tom Heath and Judy Miller have been hard at work for months, working on behalf of the people of Stevensville, getting good paying jobs to our community. They have recently been in contact with several new retail organizations and a variety of large-scale potential industrial employers. To have a sedentary leadership at the city of Stevensville would be unwise. It holds the potential to cost the taxpayers of Stevensville hundreds of new good-paying jobs if these prospective development deals fall through. We need good-paying jobs in this community and Tom Heath and Judy Miller are the right people to lead this course better tomorrow. Tom Heath is one of the most customer-friendly and knowledgeable employees you will ever have in your service. He's a tireless worker. I have often observed him arriving to work early in the morning and staying late into the night, all in the name of customer service. Truly, his service to the community epitomizes what a public servant should be. He's always willing to take the time to help someone in need. And if a citizen does not understand the why of this answer, then he will take the time to thoroughly explain to them the reasons why something must be done in a certain way. His knowledge, skills, and abilities are second to none. He has decades of experience, many years as a builder in the private sector and many more as a building inspector in the public sector. He also recently passed his certifications to become a building official. For the sake to lose this investment, his advanced education would be an unforgivable fault. Likewise, Judy Miller has also been a wonderful blessing on our community. I have often observed her working long into the night, all for the betterment of the lives of the people of Stevensville. She is a tireless servant and brings decades of experience to our position. I have also personally witnessed her treat her fellow coworkers with dignity and respect. On one occasion, I even saw her kindly encourage GIS programmer Bruce Holt to present his job occupation to the planning and zoning commission so that we would have a greater understanding and appreciation for his job. Like Tom, she puts customer service first. Because of her efforts, Stevensville is now increasingly shedding its negative stereotype of being closed for business. We need her reinstated with immediate effect to continue our community's transformation from being non-business friendly to being open for business. Please, for the sake of the economic hopes and dreams of the people of this town, please reinstate Tom Heath and Judy Miller with immediate effect. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Mark Wallace?
My name is Mark Wallace, 1402 Northdale Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Rowland and members of the council. And thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of my family. Upon hearing about the recent dismissal of Judy Miller and Tom Heath, we have to ask you as a council if proper procedure was followed. According to the governing ordinances in place, the city of Stevensville Charter it mandates, Chapter 31.39, deployment and removal of city employees. The appointment of all employees shall require approval by the city council. The removal of the same employees shall be, and this is where it gets interesting, shall be after consultation with the entire city council. Articles 3, the council, all governing and lawmaking powers of the city of Stevensville shall be vested in the city council, which shall consist of eight councilmen and the mayor. And the body shall be known as the city council. So I've gotta ask each one of you right now, was this ordinance followed? Was the mandated procedure followed? And were all council members given the opportunity to hear the grievance before action was taken? Were all council members aware of what appears to be the abrupt dismissal of Ms. Judy Miller and the suspension of Mr. Tom Heath? The answers, if the answer to any one of those questions is no, then this administration is in direct violation of the city of Stevensville charter and our city is now suffering the consequences. From our viewpoint, as a family who attends in just about all the city council meetings, workshops, and planning zoning meetings, we have the utmost respect for both Ms. Miller and Mr. Heath. Ms. Miller and Mr. Heath have created a welcome and friendly environment by following the principles of open and honest dialogue. Without these two outstanding valuable employees, it could hinder the process, the economic process of our city. Now, being mindful of the consent, of the constraints of the confidentiality of personnel matters, we must encourage administration and the entire council to fully reinstate both Ms. Miller and Mr. Heath in the best interest of our city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mark. And let me, um, let me answer your question now before we have any others come and speak. And I'm gonna do this, Randy, uh, with your assistance because I, I want to recall the discussion that you and I had earlier today. And that is, um, a, a specific discussion about, uh, and what you're referring to is, is the, the authorities for the removal and appointment of, uh, personnel that work on the city staff. There's a section in the, in the handbook that clearly delineates the difference between employees that are under direct supervision of the city administrator and those that are not. So basically, the director positions are treated differently than other employees in the city staff. And that's the, uh, that's the reference that Mr. Wallace was referring to. And the, and the two sentences that are, uh, well, there's three sentences, let me just read all of them. The city administrator shall have the authority to appoint and remove all city employees. But there's two qualifying sentences that follow that. The first sentence is that the appointment of all employees under the direct supervision of the city administrator shall require approval by the city council. Okay, so that means that if a director is, is, uh, position is vacant, there's a vacancy that's someone that's found, the city administrator decides, this is the person that I want to hire, that position is, that person is put before the council to, to vote to say, yes, we approve or no, we do not. Okay? The second sentence says, the removal of the same employees shall be after consultation with the city council. So you can see the difference there, the word consultation versus approval. In other words, the removal of an employee is the, uh, is the decision of the city administrator, but only after consultation with the city council. So tonight, we have an executive session that, that will serve as that, uh, consultation with the council. So technically, we have, uh, two employees that are still, uh, part of the city payroll, if you want to look at it that way, until our consultation takes place tonight. And so your, your input tonight is, is valuable and I appreciate the question, Mark. It's something that I intended to cover as a summary for tonight anyway. But, but you asked a question specifically, so I, go ahead and just get that out there now. Randy, is there anything you would add to that?
That's fine.
Okay. Alright, um... Next, Rick Hale.
Hi, Eric, council. I want to start just by saying, first of all, the disappointment of hearing about Judy Miller's dismissal. Uh, I think there's been a lot of work done in the last couple of years. A lot of people got roughed up during the election a year and a half ago to get to this point. And, uh, I just see no way that we're not fixing to take a step backwards. I don't care if we hire someone tomorrow that's twice as good as Judy. There's no way that they can get in place in time to keep the work that's going on right now on time, on schedule and not disrupting a bunch of schedules of the builders, the developers, and so on. I've been doing this a long time, uh, about 38 years. The last 20 years, I don't mind telling you, even with the city, it's not been fun. It's got tougher, more, uh, difficult. The last six months, uh, it's got a lot better. It's daylight and dark. And I don't think that's just me saying it. I think just about any builder, a lot of the citizens who's having issues as far as just wanting to put a storage building in their backyard or whatever, things have definitely got better. They've lightened up a lot. A lot of the credit, I do think, needs to go to Judy. Judy has came in and, uh, she's listened to the builders, uh, the developers, find out what the problem is down here at City Hall, why is it so difficult to get through? And, uh, she's trying to come up with solutions to kind of work, uh, to the problems that maybe we all could live with. And I think that she's done a good job with that. Now, if Judy has done something to ju- truly justify her dismissal, then this is gonna be very surprising and very disappointing to a bunch of people, including me. As far as I'm concerned, Judy's been a friend to the builders, the Builders Association. And I think she's done a great job. And I don't want to stop there with just Judy, I want to talk about Pat. Pat deserves as much credit as anybody for the turnaround. He, uh, he's had an open-door policy to guys like me. He, uh, I don't think he's ever lied to me. He's always done what he said he had done. I really got no qualms with Pat. He's, I just hate what's going on. I don't think this is gonna be the last time we're all gonna be in here talking about someone losing their job. Uh, I don't know if it's gonna be whether they're gonna get fired or they're gonna quit because I'm hearing there's a lot of restrictions on a lot of people. And that would have lasted about two seconds if somebody had put these on me. I wouldn't put up with it and I really don't expect these people to.
Rick?
As long as I think we have staff members from the old administration wanting to go back and do business that's been done the last 10 years. And we've got, that's left of the new administration's staff, along with the builders, the developers, the realtors, the citizens that want to watch this, this town grow and prosper. Uh, when you got these two sides, I think we're gonna keep butting heads. I think it's gonna be a problem. I don't think we're going anywhere. Until we all get on the same page and try to go the same direction, there's gonna be a problem.
Mr. Hale, it's time.
Okay. Alright, I appreciate it.
Is there any last comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, there, there is one more last comment I'd make. When y'all go back to your executive session tonight and, uh, Mr. Bridges brings up, because I've only heard Judy Miller's side of it, and that's not fair to Mr. Bridges. I'm not trying to pass judgment, I'm just telling you, we are disappointed. But when Mr. Bridges starts bringing up whatever, reasons, allegations, or whatever on, uh, Ms. Miller, why, why ever he, he had to let her go, I just really want y'all to ask yourself a couple of questions. Where did these come from? Is it coming from him or is it coming from other staff members? Especially the older staff members that was here during the last administration. Because to me, it's no secret, there's no love lost between Judy Miller, Tom Heath versus the guys upstairs who I'm talking about, Nick Williams, Bruce, Joanne. I know that there's a clash in me personally and I could be wrong. I truly think there's a conspiracy to get rid of Judy and Tom because they don't like the, the newer era that we have, which we all do like.
Thank you. Alright, if, if I may, council, I just want to, uh, take a, a pause here just for a moment and, and recognize that, that the Builders Association was who Rick was here speaking for and so to go beyond the three minutes for him was more than acceptable. But I also want to think, you know, something else that has changed in our community that I think is very positive and that is you, the builders, being willing to come together and form an association. So there is a sense of communication, uh, and education and partnership with the city. Because we, we are in this together. And, and us coming together, uh, in unity is what's gonna make us successful. As y'all have heard me say until, I hope you're tired of hearing it, the competition is not local, the competition is within the region. And we've, we've got to remain competitive to remain viable. And so just, uh, thanks for the Building Association for your, your willingness to organize.
Steve Louvers or?
Yeah, Louver, Steve, sorry.
I can't pronounce the word. I'm Steve Louvers, I'm with Amber Hong. I reside at 1606 Monterey Bay Court in Granbury. But our office is here at 886, the Moses Court here in Stevensville. And basically, I think I'm here just to reinforce what's been said in the past couple of three guys that have been up here. Uh, I've been in the home building industry unfortunately a little bit longer than probably anybody else around me, well over 40 years. And, uh, you know, I've worked with all sorts of municipalities and cities throughout the state of Texas and Houston, Fort Dallas, Fort Worth, and a lot of smaller ones. state of Texas, and Houston, Fort Dallas, Fort Worth, and a lot of smaller ones and so forth. And one of the things that I think is, that I don't think I know is vitally important is the relationship that gets established between a city council government, building departments, zoning departments, inspectors, and the building community is vitally important to the growth, success, and economic development. If you start running against each other, and I pull a book, I can show you this code, I can show you this regulation, things may go very far. Uh, myself and my business partners are here basically just to say that we've been in the Stevieville market for just a little over five years. We've built approximately seventy homes inside the city limits. We've built about thirty, twenty-five, thirty outside of the rural areas. Uh, some may be outside of the Routh County, but anyway, in this general area. And quite frankly, it's been a very good relationship and a marriage. For the most part, the processes between us and the city of Stevieville have been pretty good. You get to normal bumps in the road and the normal things that you have to go through, those procedural processes, but it's been a pretty good relationship. But however, I think it's vitally important to point out that there's two people that, that I think are, are very important to what's going on here in the city of Stevieville and the building community, and that is Tom Heap and Judy Miller. Uh, you know, Tom is, my experience in the past, I, I go back to FHA, VA inspectors, staff inspectors who had, you know, dental mirrors, walk around houses and that sort of thing. But most of these individuals were always, they were very firm, but they were also fair in their evaluation. They knew what to look for. They didn't walk around with some deck gum book trying to tell you, I'm the boss and you're not. They simply wanted to make sure that you were compliant, things were being done properly. I think the same thing exists within Tom. Tom is very fair. He's firm in what he does. When he comes in, he doesn't try to nitpick the things to pieces, look for some reason to be able to find a way to turn you down and create a problem for you. He simply looks at a way to be able to help you to get through the processes and continue on with the construction that you're trying to do. Uh, you know, and sometimes this is in the form of a red tag, and he, you know, depending on the issue that exists in that house, and sometimes it's just basically, here's some things you need to fix them, I'll be back out here tomorrow, I'll look at it, make sure you got it taken care of the way I want it. Uh, you know, I can sit here and smile a little bit and say, yeah, we all know Tom talks a little bit too much, uh, but it's the same thing. Uh, his heart is in the right place. Uh, he's very, very proud of his position, he's very proud of Stevieville, he endorses the city constantly, he's always talking about the things that he, things are coming up, and the things that are growing and developing and all that sort of thing, and he wants to see the economic growth, development, and that sort of thing continue to grow within the city of Stevieville. Agreed. It has to be within controls and ordinances and regulations and codes. Uh, Judy Miller, I, I've met Judy, Judy hasn't been here that long, we all know that. I met Judy maybe four or five times, but I will tell you, she's very impressive. Uh, again, having worked with different administrative officials from city of Fort Worth, or city of the Houston's, or some of the big, big municipalities, gosh, I've been down that highway. And, you know, it's nice to be able to have someone that is, is an open door and is willing to listen to you, to try to talk to you. I don't think her agenda is wanting to come in here and reinvent the wheel. I think she's trying to look at things, ordinances and stuff, that maybe are a little bit outdated, things that need to be addressed, and, and try to look at things in a positive way. Sometimes a new light, a new opinion about things is, is, is a good way to bring, you know, bring in some vitality to into the system and so forth.
Mr. Louvers?
Okay. I'm, I'm basically done. I'm down to my, more or less, my last paragraph here. But again, I guess our situation is one of this, from a building operation, we support Tom and Judy. We'd like to see the reinstatement. Uh, I am happy, I thank you for your time this evening. I'm more than happy to discuss this in any kind of a private conversation, if anyone would like to do so. Uh, I can get a lot longer winded than what I am here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. (Applause). There's Vince Daddio.
My name is Vince Daddio. I've been a contractor here for about thirty-eight years. I made a vow about fifteen years ago that I would never, if I could help, build within the side, the city limits of Stevieville anymore, anything, because of the frustration and aggravation that I, my fellow builders friends have gone through. For that prior period, we had good inspectors, uh, Troy, Troy Curtis, had good rapport with, uh, Betty Chu, but there was things going on beyond our control to where life was very difficult. My first twenty-five years here, I was for the council, P and Z, you name the entity up there, I was trying to get something done. It got to a point that I just threw my hands in. I said, I've had enough, had enough of BS, and I'm gonna just leave it alone. Well, we had a couple of new folks come on screen. The ones that were here before did an okay job, but it was time for them to step down, they knew it. Judy, in my mind, Tom, they're both doing a good job. If I had them working for me, I'd be very pleased. To put them in the position that they're in now, I think is very cruel. It's detrimental to every one of us builders here, and everybody that's here from the I think they need to be given some consideration. I'm only going to hear their side of the story after. I've been hearing the whole story about what garbage is going on, but just want to ask you one thing. When you have your meeting, and you find out the truth, all right, we don't know what the truth is. We've heard one side, I haven't heard both sides, but I hope when you hear all sides, that you'll take the steps to bring the hammer down where it really needs to come. Maybe we didn't fire the right persons, or put a person where they're being treated like a criminal on day-to-day activities, being watched on. Maybe there is something else out here, someplace in the building, that we need to get rid of some other folks, possibly. I don't know, but you all need to find that, because I am really, really agitated over this. You have no idea. We've been through lesser things than this that aggravated it, but this takes the cake. A city does not need to run like this. If I had anyone within my organization that didn't get along, like Mutt and Jeff, with their fellow workers, they'd be at that door, some darned bastard, a headless man, because I won't stand for it. Why should you stand for it? Why should we stand for it? If there, if you don't have harmony down here, you're going to get nothing done, nothing. So you need to look under every rock that you've got in this building and find out where you need to clean it out.
Mr. Daddio?
I know I'm putting things a little blindly, but that's just the way it goes, okay? The city, in a sense, is a business. If I didn't run my business the way it needs to be run, it's not going to run. It's not going to run. Thank you.
Thank you. (Applause). Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, that, that has provided some input to the council. Uh, it is, it's great to see the involvement by the citizens. I, I wish, I'm disappointed, uh, and I know the council is, as you are, that we're even having the discussion tonight, because there, we do not need to lose sight of, of, of the momentum and the positive, uh, reason that you're here tonight, and the difference that you're making. So, so thank you for what you're doing for our community. I know the council is extremely appreciative of that, and, uh, we also appreciate your concern and willingness to come here tonight and, and share with us, uh, your thoughts. Okay? Is it, is there anyone else before I close this session that would like to, uh, would like to speak?
May I ask a question?
You've got a... Go ahead.
I'd like to speak if possible.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Heidi Olson, and I am the president of the Stevieville Board of Realtors, and my address
is twenty-four eighty-five FM two sixteen in Iredell. But I do business here in Stevieville, I have for ten years, and I'm also a property owner here in Stevieville. Um, I just have a, a couple of points to make. You know, we're all up here, you know, trying to, trying to figure out the two, the true reasoning behind Judy's departure and Tom's administrative leave, and ultimately, we don't know the answer to that, so we're just reaching for, you know, for, for reasoning and, and what we can do to defend them. Um, on behalf of the realtors, I can tell you that I have never seen someone actively promote business within the city of Stevieville as I have of Judy. She has gone above and beyond, um, I've shown large properties to, to people that she has recruited here that could stand to bring up to five hundred jobs to Stevieville. And I really just want you to think about if this is the right move for Stevieville. We are in a very progressive format, and I feel like any other direction than the direction of Judy Miller is backwards. And I feel like Tom Heap is the easiest man out there to work with. You know, there was years I would go in and ask questions, and I would be sent in circles. And in all reality, that doesn't look good, no matter who we're doing business with, whether it's residential, commercial, farm and ranch. We really need to have someone to go to that will answer our questions directly and not send us in a tailspin. Um, another point, I understand that the city recently paid for a study concerning staffing within the city administration. Um, I understand that that report showed the need for at least four positions needed within the city. Administration for police, uh, the city administrator, planning and building, and a city engineer for public works. You know, as Rick Hale said a moment ago, you know, once you're in closed quarters, just ask yourself the following question: Was Judy relieved and Tom put on administrative leave because they didn't have the true ability to do their job? Um, you know, I, I know that I spoke on weekends with Judy, and she was up here doing clerical work on a Sunday. You know, that's, she's got a lot of ground to make up from where we came from, and if, if her job was, if she was negligent anywhere here in the office, I, I just would want you to ask yourself, is it because she didn't have the proper staffing to get it done? So, anyway, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Carl?
Carl Trussell, four oh six Tanglewood Trail. I also wanted to reiterate how disappointed I am in the firing of Judy Miller, and I ask the council to consider reinstating her tonight. Ms. Miller has done a great job in mending fences and moving the city forward. People were once again feeling welcome at City Hall. The change of attitude was what the voters wanted when they voted to change the council a year ago, and now we hear that Ms. Miller was fired because the city wants to head in a different direction. I want to know what direction we're now heading in. That's very concerning, because a lot of us worked very diligently, going door to door to get a lot of you elected, and we thought we were going in a positive direction, so if she is not going in the direction the city has in mind, what direction do you have in mind? Mayor Weldon just said that we need to come together and be successful, but once again, we find ourselves divided council, and that's very disappointing.
Thank you.
All right. Any others?
I just have a question.
All right.
Um, I'm, when you clarified well ago on the charter, I just wanted to get you to clarify a hand. If, if consultation, if the whole council was not done, is this decision already final or is this not final? Because it was my understanding that it was already final.
I'll say it again. The decision is not final until after consultation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to, any others? You, okay. Just state your name and address the record, please.
Milton Woodrow Warner, two ten Roland Street, Steveville, Texas. I have a Woodrow's Barber Shop. I opened it up three years ago. I first started off at Rock and Art Ranch Supply, and I had to go get my occupancy permit. At that time, we was different, uh, I said, leadership in the council, and Mayor King Weldon was just newly elected for his first time. Uh, I waited two months to get my occupancy permit. I graduated barber school, I had five thousand dollars in my pocket, and that was my starting need to open up my barber shop. I went, Tom was helping me, but there was other people there that were stonewalling me, and I called Mayor King Weldon up, and you met me at my barber shop, and I was sneaking in haircuts, just to pay bills. And I told Kenny my story, and, uh, next day, I got my occupancy permit. That was how things were going before this whole new change came. People were being stonewalled. Then I moved my barber shop to where it's at now, by Fuzzy's Taco, on three oh five Washington Street. I got my occupancy permit within a week. That was, that's the difference that everybody's experiencing. You know, the difference is, people are willing to get along and work with each other, and the two people that are willing to do that were Judy Miller and Tom Heap, you know? And we all make mistakes, and, uh, I've said things that probably I should regret, and I've probably said it when I was cutting hair sometimes, when I was at work. And I'm sure everybody that has a job has done things at work that they've regret. I wish that we could get both sides together in the same room, Judy, Tom, and Mr. Bridges, and hear it all out together. That's how it should be done, but we have to go behind closed doors, and y'all tell us then how it's done. But to me, that seems kind of sissy, but y'all do y'all play.
(Applause). Okay. Uh, if not, then we're going to move on with, uh, with the agenda for the evening. Again, thanks, thanks everyone for coming and providing your input. If some of you are going to leave, I may just pause for a moment here, and you can kind of clear it up. (Mumbling) All right, try it again. Item Agenda Four has been postponed to another meeting. That's, uh, Mr. Warner had asked for an update from Adamas, and, uh, we're going to wait and have that another evening. So I'll move on to Item Five on the agenda, which is the planning and commission item. Turnover of Mr. Bridges for an update.
Mayor and council, um, this is to consider approval of the final plan of Lakewood Estates Four, being seven point four acres of land out of Williamstown survey, six eight three near Eret County, Texas. The, here at, the planning is open commission met on July twenty-ninth, and they recommend approval to the city council of the final plan as submitted. Uh, this property is located in northeast part of the city, it's only nine lots, the, uh, this property is actually zone R of one point five, single-family residential, which requires a six thousand square foot lot, and a minimum structure size of a thousand feet. The Wensong Street will be continued service in nine lots. The plan has been submitted and approved for all water, sewer, street drainage and... The plan has been submitted and approved with all water, sewer, street drainage improvements. The developer is Mr. Brad Smith, and as noted, this is the fourth phase of this subdivision. He follows master plan several years ago. With page is approved over time, there's lots renewed, so this final plan meets all subdivision regulations, and it is ready for your final approval.
All right.
I have a quick question, council, mayor. This doesn't require any kind of public area, any...
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve the request for the final plan of Lakewood Estates being 7.404 acres of the Williams Sim survey as presented in our tender package.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the final plan of Lakewood Estates 4, Williams Sim survey, Page 683. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? If that motion carries, the final plan's approved as presented. Item 6 on the agenda is to consider the approval of the contract with Freezer Nichols to develop the thoroughfare plan, and Pat, you want to give us a proof on that, please?
Yes. As you all recall, in the, in the current budget, council approves $75,000 to revise the thoroughfare plan of the 2030 comprehensive plan. For those in the audience that may not be aware of it, just one particular item that the mayor has brought up on more than one occasion. When you look at that thoroughfare plan, there's, there's one particular road that looks like it shows to be somewhat of a major road, and what it does is actually go right through the lake, and so times have changed, the surroundings have changed, and the need to update this plan to improve transportation, to set areas for a particular land zoning is an economic development tool. This is, is recommended for this plan. Ms. Miller, in previous experience with Freezer Nichols, I have Mr. Dan Setko here from Freezer Nichols. Dan, if you could come forward, if council does have any questions for Dan. Dan's put this together. It looks like an estimated six to nine months to complete this, this study, and their plan right now is to have at least three meetings involving staff and the public to kind of reach the consensus on where we need to be with transportation, bike trails, et cetera.
Okay, well, thank you all for being here. Any questions from Setko, Wags here?
Just one, sir.
Okay.
How soon can you start?
Tomorrow, if the vote goes positive tonight. I will, I will make one comment. Mr. McClinton pointed out one typo on the contract, and I just want to clarify, it's on page SC6, Page 6. It said that we anticipate all technical work will be needed nine months, but actually says six months. It's only changed, it's just a typo. So that would be the only change that has been pointed out. Any other questions of the council this evening?
We appreciate you coming. Did you have to drive far?
I came from office, our home, in my office is in Austin, so I did drive from Austin. Our home office is in Fort Worth.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the professional services agreement with Freezer Nichols to provide thoroughfare element of the 2030 comprehensive plan.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve contract with Freezer Nichols to develop the thoroughfare plan. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed?
No.
All right, that motion carries. And I guess I would like to make one comment about the plan that I think is really important. I know there's been, been some misuse of the word "plan" and "study" in what we're trying to do, but I think this, this plan, and this is important, ties directly into street repair. Without this plan, we won't repair the right streets first. It's an element of understanding which street to fix first, and you've seen Don shaking his head back there. I didn't prompt him to do that, but this, this is a part of, and I'm gonna say it again, I've asked the council to consider a million dollars worth of street repair in the upcoming budget, $100,000 toward design, and this plan is directly tied to us being able to start fixing some streets here, and more importantly, spending money on the worst first, because we need to spend precious dollars we have on the very most, the most critical need, and it needs to be defined with some objective analysis of what is worst, not just somebody's emotion or somebody's phone call. I'm sorry, phone calls are important, but the squeaky wheel shouldn't guide the investment on our streets. So council, thank you for that tonight. The next item is consider approval of resolution adopting the Eret County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, and Chief, Chief, I'll brief this on that, please.
Thank you, ma'am. About a year ago, the North Central Texas cog came to us and started to help us work on our hazard mitigation plan, and first off, I want to thank Captain Steven Apelletti for getting a tremendous amount of work on getting this done. Basically, what this does, it will become a part of our emergency, overall emergency management plan, and its big purpose, we identified some hazards that we could face, such as tornadoes, erosion, things like that, and because we have those in our plan now, when a disaster hits Texas, a declared disaster, we are eligible, or can be eligible for some grants that will help us alleviate those things. For instance, if, and it, and it works all over Texas, if a tornado hits somewhere in the Panhandle and there's a disaster declared in Texas, well, there's grants available for everybody in Texas. So if we were to build a community center or whatever, and we wanted to put in a hardened operations center, there will be grants available for that. There may be grants, we're looking into it after we approve this, I'm assuming you're going to, after we approve this, there may be grants available for some of the erosion on the Bosque River Trail. We're looking into that, and there's some things like that, we're not sure, but, but it's possible. But basically, it makes us eligible for some grants.
Any questions for Chief? Nick Allen.
Chief, are these federal monies that you're talking about?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. There are FEMA grants and, and federal grants, most of them come from FEMA, but they're...
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Not all entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 2015 R 11, adopting the Eret County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Wagner, to adopt resolution 2015 R 11, the Eret County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries, adopting resolution 2015 R 11. Next item, back to you, Chief, to consider approval of a mutual aid agreement with Hamilton Healthcare Systems EMS.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a mutual aid agreement with several entities, Hamilton Healthcare not being one of them. Basically, what this will do, and why it's important to Hamilton, is the hospitals have to have in their emergency management plan, they have to have a way to evacuate their hospital, and they have to have several layers that they can go into to do that, and they have to help be able to designate many more ambulances than it would actually take to do their hospital, because some of them may not be available at that time. I don't think we have ever actually given mutual aid to the Hamilton Hospital District, but they, in, in his burden, they gave us aid during the landmark fire. They came, we had ambulances come from all over the country up here to help us with that, so they were up here this. Randy has looked over this agreement, and it's pretty much just a standard mutual aid agreement, and I recommend that you pass it.
Any questions for Chief?
And that's with reciprocity?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. If the, almost all standard mutual aid agreements will say, we will help you if we have stuff available, they will help us if they have stuff available. We have an out, if our ambulances are busy or our resources are busy during that time period, we're out. We're not, and that's why they have to help a lot more ambulances than they need to evacuate their hospital.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the mutual aid agreement with the Hamilton Healthcare System EMS.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Sacree, to approve the mutual aid agreement with Hamilton Healthcare Systems EMS. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? That motion carries, approving mutual aid agreement. All right, the next item is to consider approval of resolution 2015 R 12, authorizing the Stephenville Economic Development Authority. And how do you want to just give us a quick synopsis of what, what's there?
What this is, is the formations of the Economic Development Authority. The certification deals with designation as a nonprofit. It describes the, the management of the corporation, the board of directors consisting of seven directors, which are selected by the city council for two-year term. The certification places some restrictions on who can actually be a director, and no employee, officer, or member of the city council or city, the city council can become a director of the Council Development Authority. As it stands now, the mayor, mayor pro temp, city administrator, chamber of commerce, president, and county official, EDC, executive director shall serve as ex officio directors, which means that are entitled to sit in on the meetings, they are not entitled to vote. All directors must reside in Stephenville or Eret County. Directors may be removed by the city council at any time with that cause. Board of directors, for any vacancies occurring, those vacancies are also filled by the council.
Okay. Any, any questions for Pat? I think it's important for those that are in attendance tonight, the council met last Thursday, and we went over the certificate of formation and approved its content. The other thing that we had to decide on was the, the board of directors, and we, we go around and approve those names, and now this, this resolution, with this resolution, we submit to the Secretary of State, which has to formally recognize the corporation, and once that's, once that occurs, then we will formally recognize and announce the directors, and they will be able to function in their designated capacities as directors. So I'll entertain a motion then at this time for the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number, resolution number 2015 R dash 12, for formation of the CDO, of the EDC in Stephenville.
Second. All right, the motion's been made by Mr. McClinton, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve resolution 2015 R 12, authorizing Stephenville Economic Development Authority. Any discussion? Our proceeding vote, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, and I just want to thank the council for your work over the last few months on bringing this together. I mean, you deserve to give yourself a hand. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. McClinton, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved as presented. All right, comments from the city minister, so Pat?
Hey, just a reminder, the upcoming council meetings next week, we've got budget being intermittently scheduled from the eleventh through the 14th. Whether it takes that long is up to you all. We'll have another budget meeting on the 18th, and on the 25th, we'll have committee meetings consisting of community services, personnel, and public works.
On the 25th, 25th. Okay, council, Park?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's good to, good to have a lot of crowd, and we appreciate you spending the time and making the effort to come be a part of it. Thank you.
Appreciate everybody coming down, especially those that have spoken.
Allen?
Jake.
Mr. Sacree?
Jerry?
You sure?
Sure.
All right. Also, I, I just want to, I guess, say that we're a community that is very blessed with the, the opportunity that we have, and the, for us not to lose sight as a council as we move forward together for our community. I want to thank all of you for your service to this council and the work that it's putting up. And for the meeting tonight, we will continue now in executive session in compliance with provisions in the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Section 559074, Personnel Matters, and we will recess to the training room.